I am going to record all these sessions just because people are going to be in and out and we'll just it won't be quite as clunky next time so I'll bring my other rig off taking part. So at any one time we'll have probably 10 people if everybody shows up we'll probably have 10 people in this group for this first study. So why don't we, let's start with prayer, let's just kick off that way. Dear heavenly Father, thank you Lord for this opportunity for us to get back together. And Lord I just ask you to be a part of our discussion and to enlighten us with how you want us to use this information in our lives and how we can learn from Nehemiah and the work he did and how in his relationship with you. If it gets for me sins, just know we pray. Alright, so we're starting off with Nehemiah, which is totally selfish on my part because I needed to do some research for a writing project so you guys are going to will get a credit hopefully one day in a published piece of work so we shall see. And you will be referred to as the group. So so what I want to, and we've done this a few times in the past, what I want us to do is approach this from a pseudo inductive style of study which is to dig into things like the context of the setting, you know, what's going on in Jerusalem and in Persia and Babylon? And who are the actors? Who's involved? What's their stories? What makes that important to the story and how does God use them in the story? The other is, and this is tough because this is not my bailiwick, but is trying to identify words that are important to the story and look at the translation and try to gain an understanding of what the original context of some of the language was because we can learn a lot that way because there's a translating from Hebrew to Greek or even from Greek to English, you know, there's the original like we do today, words have multiple meanings and multiple uses and then in some contexts in those old languages, there's one word that can cover a lot of ground depending on the context in which it's used. So that's some of the things I'd love for us to look for those and again, why is it important and what does it have to do with the story? And I hope nobody minds me videoing. I didn't ask that on the beginning. I just like to sit and watch myself at home. Yeah, I've got YouTube now you pull it up.
Can I back it just a minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
The term pseudo-inductive, I was intrigued by that so I Googled it and I can't find anything.
Well, there's no such thing as pseudo-inductive.
I know what pseudo means, means false. I know what inductive logic is, reasoning. And so I bet I don't understand how the words go together.
Great question. Inductive Bible study is a form of Bible study.
I get that.
That's uses reasoning.
Yeah.
And I just always throw in pseudo because I don't there's a whole process to use for inductive and I'm too lazy to. I mean, if you, I don't know, Wayne ever was in one of Micah's classes. I mean, you would use multiple colored markers and then you would you would highlight places in green and word, different words and names in red and that's how you kind of help.
Identify.
So it's, you know, most of our Bible study we do is devotional reading of the Bible. And inductive kind of digs down and again, looks at context and language and ideas. So anyway. It's probably a better word, light inductive. Or heavy devotional, I don't know.
We won't get on nothing.
I hope it's not, yeah, I hope it's helpful, but for me it's gonna be helpful. It may not be, I don't care what y'all get. Just kidding. So let's start with here are two objectives I think that I hope we can pull out of this study. Is to compare and contrast the culture of ancient Persia in Jerusalem with the 2018 global community we're in now. What lessons can we learn? And then what are those lessons that we are being doomed, that we're doomily repeating or we're doomed to repeat? And then the second one is what can we learn 2,500 years later from Nehemiah that we can apply to our faith and lives today? He's a pretty interesting cat if you, once you start getting into Nehemiah. So let's do that. Let's, who is Nehemiah? And it's for you new folks and for the old folks, basically all of y'all are old folks go, this is my small group where I never have something to write on. These people know I can't teach without a board and a pen in my hand. So anyway, so I'm bringing my two girls, it's like having two girlfriends in the same room. This is gonna be kind of awkward for a while. So and honey, I do not, that's just a metaphor. It's not, I don't have two girlfriends. Crazy. So who's Nehemiah? What do we know about Nehemiah? Let's start making a list. What do we know about Nehemiah?
He was the cupbearer in the port of Artaxerxes, the king.
Cupbearer. King. Okay. What is, what is that? What is the cupbearer? What is that?
Well, he was responsible for, one of the things was tasting the wine before the king to make sure it wasn't poisoned.
So what can we infer from that? He's not some sommelier that's tasting the wine to make sure it's high enough quality. What's his real role?
To die if it's poisoned.
Yeah, so he's at a top level of security.
Like the secret service.
So.
Trusted, very trusted.
But yeah, so he had a high level of trust with Artaxerxes.
And my interpretation of it, too, from what I've read is it goes a little bit beyond that because you're talking about a huge royal court, you know, hundreds and hundreds of staff, if you will, or courtiers. And I think he had a leadership position over a large component. So it wasn't just security, but it was the running of the household, if you will, or the court itself. So I think he had organizational responsibilities and leadership over other people. And yeah, he was responsible for making sure nobody killed the king or at least poisoned him, but I think his role was butler steward, house manager, business manager, all kind of roles in the one. And I may be wrong about that.
No, absolutely. That's exactly what I read too. So it kind of reminds me of the guy, the head butler on Downton Abbey, what was his name?
Carson.
Carson. Kind of like a Carson in a tune.
Yeah.
Same attitude, just different clothes.
Yeah, but Downton Abbey was one little estate. We're talking about a boy. So a large court.
So highly trusted, because the king was trusting him with his life. So you know, this makes a lot of sense. The leadership and management of the court. Because one thing we're gonna, we're gonna look at is his process that he went through to rebuild the wall in Jerusalem and it was, I mean, it was very leader centric with a high level of, you know, at a high level of leadership, not just managing part of the project, but he obviously had experience managing and dealing with pretty high level people. So you know, I think this is one of those critical ones. What else do we, what else do we know? What are other facts we know about Nehemiah?
About Jews.
Okay. Spring dreams, rain. Yeah, let's talk about that. So he was a Jew. But he was where was he born?
He actually was born in Judea, wasn't he? And then he was, was he born in, so he had never experienced.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's something that's important to Nehemiah's stories. He was born into exile. And depending on the timing, his parents might have been born in, he might have been second generation born into exile. You know, when, matter of fact, I would bet he probably, his parents probably were, were born in exile, into exile as well. So and he was born into the fortress of Susa where he served as an adult. So probably his father had a role in the royal household as well. I would guess that would be, that's kind of an assumption. So he was Jewish born, he was born in I forgot that date, I didn't write it down.
Didn't say it did.
I ran across it somewhere, in the 400 to 500 timeframe. So they, he started his project in 445. So he was probably born around 500. So so you might come across what Nehemiah means. God comforts or comforted of Yahweh, God comforts. It's pretty interesting. I like that.
He obviously had great standing with the king because when he asked to leave, the king was like, yeah, take on take these bunch of people and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, that's how it works at KUB, isn't it? Hey Darrell, we need this. We'll take it. So this idea is Jewish born born into exile brings us to another major word, diaspora, which we've talked about before. Diaspora. So what does diaspora mean?
A dispersion of a big group of people all over the place?
Yeah. Yeah, that's obviously where we get our modern day word dispersion. So diaspora, I've got the technical definition here somewhere.
I've always heard it pronounced diaspora. So and we're, a little fun fact, when I lived in Charleston, South Carolina, there's a big Gullah community there.
Mm-hmm.
With the Gullah.
Yeah.
They consider themselves diaspora. They'll tell you that. We are the diaspora.
Yeah.
Today.
Say that because you can answer that with a question I was asking. I didn't know that. So what's, what does Google say? Diaspora? Diaspora?
Diaspora.
Thank you, Wayne. Edit video. So the Greek word diasporian is the verb, Greek verb diasporian and the Greek noun diaspora describe a condition of spiritual anguish accompanying the dispersal of Jews by an angry God. So that's, that's the Bible translation of it. So so it's not only the act of dispersing, it's a condition of anguish being separated from your homeland. Because God is not happy with you. I noted in the words of Deuteronomy 2825, "The Lord will cause you to be defeated before your enemies. You will come at them from one direction, but flee from them in seven. And you will become a thing of horror to all the kingdoms on earth." So that was the, that was Moses's prophecy from God to the children of Israel if they were disobedient, that God would spread them out. So it shouldn't have been a surprise. He probably should have done it earlier, but so so you've got these Jews that are living in captivity in Babylon and the Cyrus and Nebuchadnezzar that were the conquering kings that took control, you know, their strategy at the time was we're gonna take the skilled craftsmen, the leaders, the, you know, the top one percenters, you know, that to into Babylonian culture and assimilate them. And then the long play was that at some point they could go back and create a, you know, ideally a Babylonian colony in the conquered land to lead the unskilled workers that were left behind and probably the farmers that were left behind in Jerusalem and Judea. So that was their strategy. Now, we fast forward a little bit and Artaxerxes is not quite as ruthless as his forefathers. And obviously, you know, God has softened his heart. Because before he sent Nehemiah, he also had dealings with a guy named Ezra, which will probably be a great follow-up study to Nehemiah. We studied the book of Ezra because their stories kind of overlap. And we'll talk about Ezra in the last couple of chapters of this study. So what are some, thinking about this idea of diaspora? What what are some other, you know, Rob mentioned the Gullas in South Carolina.
And if you're not familiar with what, who the Gullah are, they were the first, some of the first slaves that came into the North American continent as early as, you know, 15, 16 hundreds. And they came from Angola, where Gullah comes from. And they were also the first slaves that were freed. They were freed, some of them as early as the 1700s, long before the Civil War. Because what happened was the rice plantations played out. And so a lot of Africans were sent to Mississippi and Alabama and throughout the rest of the South. And that, they were horrible conditions there. These people were basically just free and they were still house servants and still sun worked the land all the way up until the Civil War, but a large portion didn't. What's the plantation soil and the rice plantations played out. And so they see themselves as truly African. And the culture there today, you've seen the sweetgrass baskets that they weave. It's a very, very African culture, very African dialect. A lot of African names. This is what, 2018?
Yeah.
And so they really never assimilated in the way the rest of most African Americans have. They live in their own little cities and they have assimilated some, but by and large haven't. And so they see themselves as African diaspora.
There was a kid's show when my kids were little called Gullah Gullah Island. That and I thought it was made up.
Do you have a chance to go visit?
Did some research.
Gullahs in the world country, definitely gonna do it.
I think that was Yelling Gullahs.
Oh, that's when, that's when you were a child, you know, back when they were making the transition from black and white to colored people.
I believe y'all got stuff to Gullah Gullah Island really well.
Yeah. Yeah, our kids watched it. What? Let's talk about this because this was, is not an ancient idea. Obviously it is. It perpetuates. What are some other examples of diaspora? That we know of?
American Indians.
Okay. American Indians? Okay. What else?
Palestinians.
Palestinians.
All kinds of refugees and Syrian.
Yeah, the African and Syrian refugees.
A lot of the South Vietnamese people fled South Vietnam when the the north came down, took over in the mid 70s.
What about the Jews? They're still, I mean, they're still living in. And I cannot find my notes anywhere. And I fear they're in a box in the attic under tons of stuff. But Micah did a class and we talked a lot about, it was a class about how we got to where we are in the Middle East. And a big part of that was in the 1800s into the 19, early 1900s, you know, the Jewish people were looking for a place to call home. You know, 100 years before they created the state of Israel after World War II. And there was a lot of you know, they meant antisemitism at every turn basically. And again, I don't want speak off the cuff because I don't have those notes in front of me. But it's pretty interesting how that that culture was still kind of prevalent in, you know, the Jewish people. Almost like it had become a part of the DNA 2,500 years later from the original dispersion. I guess what I'm trying to ask then is how does this play into, obviously we know how it plays into the story of Nehemiah because you know, God promised him that you gotta screw up again, you do it one more time, you're gone. He was scattered, like I like I told Moses to tell you. That leads us into a question of Nehemiah was born and possibly two generations away from being, having any connection to people living in Jerusalem. Why does he give crap if the walls are torn down?
Because he's a devout Jew.
Okay, what does that mean? Because there's devout, there's other devout Jews there. I mean, Daniel was a, I'm not trying to debate. I'm trying to throw up examples.
Well, let me, let me tell you, one of my experiences when I was at college, I was dating a Jewish woman. And so she took me home to the Seder meal. So I actually got to experience the Seder meal. And it became really clear to me that night, especially when they have roles to play. You're sitting around the table and everybody has a role. The two most important roles are the oldest man in the room and the youngest boy in the room. And so they passed down that tradition through thousands of years that way. And so, and I'm sure he experienced the same thing. So while he was removed from it, his family was, his family carried it here. They knew the stories, they knew the tradition, they had the Seder meal and around the table, one of the point in his life, he was the young boy that was, you know, wise tonight like no other and they answered.
There's some speculation that Nehemiah might have, as a young boy, might have known Daniel as an old man. So there could, they speculate there could have been smoke alive.
That land was sacred to them though, you know, it was promised to them by God. And so, I mean, that, again, it goes back to that tradition, but I think that it had been, for them, it was consecrated by God for them, you know? They felt like they possessed it even though they, you know, they not had ownership of it in a technical sense.
Had lost it, but maybe took whatever.
About it. Okay.
The end of the Seder meal, it's maybe next year in the promised land.
Yeah, that's always the end is, is hope. Why else would Nehemiah, you know, when I ask a question again, it means I'm usually fishing for my answer, right? We got a few, it's kind of, you know, you knew folks. Somebody's there used to. So what else would compel Nehemiah? And we're close, you know, if we were playing hide and seek, we'd be getting warm. Getting warm. Matter of fact, it's flared up a little bit with some heat. So it's close to devotion. Let's start with devotion. This is close, but there's a
We asked the question.
There's a specific word I'm looking for. What would compel Nehemiah to want to take on this project to rebuild the walls?
Because he could, he had the wherewithal to do it.
Okay. I disagree with that, but he does, you're right. That ties into the answer.
Okay.
Where did he get that wherewithal?
The king's letters that he took with him.
No, 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 Wayne. Back up, back up, back up.
God gave him the
What's the semis' goal answer for the Old Testament?
To God gave him the courage to ask the king if he could go spend time and do it. And so he obeyed God and asked if he could also get help from other people to do it.
Yes.
He was obviously distressed because the gates had been burned, the walls torn down. People had tried to come back and they weren't allowed to rebuild the walls. So he took that on as a, as a project for his people.
Before we get too deep into that, let's, let's, let's work on this list a little bit and then we'll start tying it together. So what do we know about Artaxerxes? The first, actually, because there was others.
His king.
His king, yeah. Or she'd have to be called dumb man. I'm dumb man. He was the great, great grandson of Nebuchadnezzar. So that's yeah, Nebuchadnezzar, we know a lot of that. What else? You might come up with anything on? So he had, he had dealings with Ezra and actually sent him back to Jerusalem. And Ezra just a one liner, you know, Ezra kind of reinstituted the law in Jerusalem. So he became kind of the actually, I think he and Nehemiah combined kind of created this new Moses. Because again, they overlap some. So we'll talk about it again. So Artaxerxes seemed to have compassion for these Jews and their devotion to Jerusalem. Why? Why?
They had gained his respect through many They had gained his respect through many, many years of service and upstanding, trustworthy behavior.
I buy that.
A little more cynical approach would be what you said earlier about he wanted a colony. And if he had his people in Judah, Judea, they're less likely to revolt or cause trouble. And so he's got a friendly neighbor.
Peace and expansion. Which again, was part of the, his forefathers' architecture of how this exile was supposed to work. Or they would have not left anybody. They would have just wiped out. So that was never the plan. What else, what else could have compelled Artaxerxes to do? What he did?
Maybe he had even started thinking maybe God was real.
About that, but I think God had a hand in it. I don't know what his thoughts, he may have, but.
Maybe he wanted, he wanted to go fix it up so it would be a nicer place to rule over.
Maybe, I mean, I think that's part of his peace and expansion. But you know, remember that Holy Spirit? Oh, never mind. We haven't gotten there yet. These guys finished it timely, the Holy Spirit stayed. In a future chapter that we'll get to in summer, we talk about how the Spirit works on people. Talk about how the Spirit works in other people that we don't consider Christian.
Yeah. They're sometimes used. Not a last word, but you know.
So, you know, I think that, you know, definitely God softened his, I don't know, softened his heart, sounds more like Moses and.
If you back up into the book of Hezra, King Artaxerxes had actually decreed that the building of the city should cease. And so that was one of the reasons things were kind of deteriorated in Jerusalem.
Okay. What, where, where in Ezra was that?
Where in Israel?
Now, where in Ezra?
Oh, that's Ezra four, seven through twenty-three.
And Wayne, I may be misremembering this, so you can double check me. One of the reasons he did that, I think, was because of the squabbling of his body among the Jews.
That's exactly right.
So he said, our God is just calling upon this whole thing to get your act together.
Yeah, exactly right. But it stopped everything.
And the timelines on that are a little fuzzy between Ezra and Nehemiah. There's like a seven year difference in that Ezra was sent. He went back to Jerusalem before Nehemiah, I think. And it's, there's, there's like that, so Ezra's already there when Nehemiah comes in.
Yeah, because he had read from the, he read from the scroll.
The scroll.
Like you said, brought back the law, but the infrastructure of the city wasn't.
So there's, there's a little bit of, and actually, I think this is one where Nehemiah learned from past experience possibly. Because Ezra left and didn't get any of the official documents that Nehemiah asked for, which basically provided him with safe passage to Jerusalem through some of these other kingdoms. Uh, because he faced opposition very quickly from the Moabites and. So, um, so let's, let's look at Nehemiah one and two real quick. Let's kind of dive into the, so we've kind of set the stage, we'll continue to, oh, here it is. Artaxerxes reigned from four sixty-five to four twenty-four. He sent Ezra to Jerusalem in four fifty-eight. And then Nehemiah went in four forty-five. The wall rebuilding project began in four forty-five, so the twentieth year of his reign. So who's got Ezra? I mean, Nehemiah one, the first one through eleven. Read the whole, somebody read that first chapter of Nehemiah real quick. Whoever has it.
The whole chapter?
Yeah, it's ten verses of it.
The words of Nehemiah, the son of. It came to pass in the month of Chislo in the twentieth year, as I was in Chushan, the citadel, that Anani, one of my brethren, came with men from Judah. And I asked them concerning the Jews who had escaped, who had survived the captivity concerning Jerusalem. And they said to me, the survivors who were left from the captivity in the province are very in great distress and reproach. The wall of Jerusalem is also broken down and its gates are burned with fire. So it was when I heard these words that I sat down and wept and mourned for many days. I was fasting and praying before the God of heaven. And I said, I pray, Lord God of heaven, oh great and awesome God, you keep your heaven in mercy with those who love you and observe your commandments. Please let your ear be attentive and your eyes open, that you may hear the prayer of your servant, which I pray before you now, day and night, for the children of Israel, your servants, who confess the sins of the children of Israel, which we have sinned against you. Both my father's house and I have sinned. We have acted very corruptly against you and have not kept the commandments, the statutes, or the ordinances which you commanded your servant Moses. Remember, I pray, the word that you commanded your servant Moses saying, if you are unfateful, I will scatter you among the nations. But if you return to me and keep my commandments and do them, though some of you were cast out to the farthest part of the heavens, yet I will gather them from here, from there, and bring them to the place which I have chosen as dwelling for my name. Now, these are your servants and your people, whom you have redeemed by your great power and by your strong hand. Oh, Lord, I pray, please let your ear be attentive to the prayer of your servant and to the prayer of your servants who desire to fear your name. And let your servant prosper this day, I pray, and grant him mercy in the sight of this man, for I was the king who kept him.
Okay. What couple of important things occurred in that? In that first chapter?
Nehemiah came back with a terrible report. It says it's one of his brothers, I don't know.
Yeah. I think it is one of his brothers, they. So.
And then when he got the terrible report, he said, I sat down and wept. For some days I mourned and fasted and prayed before the God of heaven. Then I said, and the entire rest of the chapter is prayer.
Oh, repentance too, of the following away of the Jewish people from God.
Yes, actually, one of the, when you're as old as I am, you have a lot of notes in your Bible. And we did a Bible study years ago when I was in Memphis, Tennessee. And they had this, they used this as a model prayer. And the model they used was acts, A-C-T-S. The first part of the prayer is adoration, the second is confession, then comes thanksgiving, and then comes supplication, A-C-T. Mexican word for the prayer.
So. He was distressed. And again, you know, that is attributed to his devotion to his heritage. He had no tithe in the land. He fasted, which, you know, I wouldn't be my ideal weight if I fasted every time I was distressed. Because I would not eat my bread.
I usually go the other direction.
Yeah, exactly, it's the opposite. And then prayer, which, you know, that, that's kind of a, a formula in itself to deal with, to deal with kind of pain in our lives. Just if, if that's all you pulled out of Nehemiah was that, I think that's a, that's a nugget, that's a golden nugget. Yeah, this prayer, you know, you can break it down to that, to that, to the act prayer, or, you know, you can just even simplify it down to three parts, which is the, you know, the prayer always with praise and then, you know, persisted in his supplication and then, I mean, the celebration and praise and repentance. And then, then he, the other thing I want to pull out of this is, what did he ask God to do in the prayer? Because that's something I've overlooked for many, many years. And it hit me like a sledgehammer the other day.
Oh, Lord, let me, let your ear be attentive to the prayer of your servant. Is that what you get that?
Uh huh.
So he asked God to listen.
And then what he said at the end.
Your servant's success today by granting him favor in the presence of this man.
Or another translation says in the presence of the king. So he asked God to pave the way for him.
And I was really intrigued by that last sentence or that simple statement, which was actually not part of the prayer, so I just spoke a minute ago.
Right.
I was cupbearer to the king, so it's like, the way I interpret that is God is speaking to him and saying, dude, you're Nehemiah. You've got a powerful position here, you've got the ear of the king, you've got the capacity and the wherewithal to do something about this. Why are you here? Go get on the road and let's, let's, you know, you've got this, let's go do this. And I was cupbearer to the king.
Yeah.
I can do something.
And, yeah, absolutely.
It is that knowledge that where God has positioned him right after he's breathed that, yeah.
Bingo.
So I mean, sometimes you don't get it right until.
And, and the connecting point is, you know, Nehemiah was, had enough humility to ask God to, to pave the way. Now, when we get to chapter two, we get a little more. When we get to chapter two, we kind of get a little more inclination into prayer part. How long did he pray for? Did you come across? It's hard to discern that from the way it's written in the scripture. You have to know the ancient calendar. So I cheated and found. So basically, he prayed about this, not just the one time with one prayer. He prayed about it and fasted about it for four months, according to the scripture. That, that the span between the month of Nisan, Nisan and Chislo. Chislo. So he started preparing, Chislo. And now we start off chapter two in the month of Nisan, which the interpretation I read said that's kind of December to April. So he was a little bit busy with Christmas. But Easter really got him.
And a sickle ball party.
Exactly, there was a sickle ball party. And he won big, won big. So four months, he prayed, fasted about this. So not only was he obedient, what else was he? What's another word?
Versus the correction.
What's another P word?
Patient.
Because he obviously was in a position as cupbearer, but it's kind of a tenacious position. He, he, if he approached this the wrong way.
Don't risk.
He was, he was gonna, you know, he could have been tried for treason and killed on the spot. So, um, you know, that's, again, if you're just going to pull two nuggets out of the, if you only get to the first two chapters in Nehemiah, that's as far as you go. You know, if you pull out this idea of obedience and patience, that, you know, God causes to be, you know, we're supposed to be obedient to God. But in being obedient, we also have to be on his timetable. So there's a patience.
So with that being the case, when he went to the king with this, I mean, the way the king started out was he noticed something was bothering him.
Yeah.
So he, it must have been more around fear of, I'm going to finally ask him than it was. Because over four months, surely he would have noticed something was bothering him for that. So he must have let it really show this one particular day.
Yeah.
And obviously, he, the king was in a position to kind of receive this because he didn't freak out.
Or maybe that's how Nehemiah knew it was finally time, the king actually.
Maybe, maybe he looked like that for four months and the king was like, hey, something's wrong.
You have lost a lot of weight. What's up? What's going on? What is going on?
My kids do exactly the right time.
Eat a burger. Eat a burger, dude. So, yeah, absolutely. So God did put this whole, whole thing into motion with Artaxerxes being open to granting Nehemiah permission to go. And I think one of the first, one of the questions they asked, either his wife or himself asked, you know, how long he would be gone? And I'm curious how he answered that because he was, he was gone for twelve years. But at this point, I'm sure he didn't think he was going to be gone for twelve years. I'm sure it was probably going to take multiple years to get. But I'm not sure he knew quite specifically it was going to be. So I'm curious if he got a couple of letters from the king, you know, hey, how's the project coming, dude? You know, how we doing on the timeline? I haven't gotten a, a update yet. So. What was Nehemiah's first step in rebuilding, in this rebuilding project? So he, he gets permission, he gets the papers, you know, he's, and here's another, here's another kind of point to pull out of this in, in how we apply this to life. He, he was obedient and he was patient. He waited for God's time and for God to make it happen. And he was obedient in the first place. But also, at some point, God gives us the green light. And then we have to then apply our God-given talents and our skills that he, that he gave Nehemiah, that he gives us, then to go do his will in the world. So Nehemiah went in project manager mode, knew he needed some papers. Need the right papers, need supplies, need some people, you know? So he was, he was prepared mentally. So it wasn't just he was praying and fasting the whole time. You know, he was developing this plan with God in this, in this four months of prayer too. And so, you know, he was, he was ready to take action. So. So what's the first thing he did? What he got there? And this is, this is one of my favorite parts of the whole story.
He inspected what he had to work with without really announcing it ahead of time.
Yeah. Made a surprise inspection. And Wayne has drawn out Nehemiah's Jerusalem and the wall and the gates. And some snarky picture of me that I'm just going to run with it. Because I wish I had the rights. So. So under the cover of darkness, he goes around and assesses. Because again, this is the first time he's been to Jerusalem. He's, I mean, he's a new kid in town. And even though he's got paperwork, he does not have the lay of the land. So, um, again, you know, Nehemiah is prepared because he understands that. He understands that he's, he, he's going to run into opposition, so I need some paperwork to flash to these other kingdoms when I go through. And I need to figure out what the real. And I need to figure out what the real damage is, see what's going on before, you know, people figure out who I am. Cause he'll, he'll, with his stature, he'll, 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 he'll run into opposition. But what else will he run into coming into the position he's in?
Lack of trust, because he doesn't know anything about it.
Lack of trust. That's, yeah, absolutely. And, and then there, there are also those, uh, now they weren't using, uh, call centers, but they were still scamming people. I mean, there, there were big people coming with their hand out. Because again, there, there was nothing there. So, you know, he was going to have people that were going to try to influence him as well. And, and maybe, um, get a little special accoutrements for their part of the wall, or their part of the city or whatever. So. You know, then I, I think he was, he, he wanted to get fresh eyes. So, um, we'll have to get Wayne to draw this picture exactly every week without, you know, sans me. Uh, so, so we can watch that. So maybe we'll, we'll plot the progress. What else did you get out of chapter two about Nehemiah? Any other nuggets?
Well, and again, this is a question, I guess. Um, just let me read this. He, so he goes to the piece, so he's done his little night reconnaissance and he knows he's got his plan. So he goes to the people and he says, you see the trouble we're in? And these are the, I guess, these are the, whatever the ruling class that's there. So he's got the, the people with the most stature around him, I'm assuming. And he says, see the trouble we're in? Jerusalem lies in ruins. Its gates have been burned, et cetera, et cetera. Let us rebuild the wall of Jerusalem. Also tell them about the gracious hand that my God upon me and what the king had to say to me. And they replied, let's start rebuilding. Really? It was that easy?
Yeah.
Oh, the next sentence is in my Bible. So they began this good work.
Yeah, I, I got a feeling there's, there's a lot of re, in between the lines there.
With the, but the fact of what the, the matter, there must have not been enough opposition for the writer to actually know that.
Yeah.
From the Jews themselves. Now, there was a lot of opposition from the non-Jews.
Yeah. And, and that'll be an important part of his process that we'll, we'll talk about how he dealt with. So. Again, one of our objectives is to kind of translate this, you know, as we do with any study of, you know, biblical text. What is this, you know, how do we translate this for our lives? I mean, you know, I'm not going to be building any walls. You know, Steve Bight, cyber walls or something, I don't know, proton walls.
No, but you're going to be doing big significant things that you have the wherewithal to do to advance the kingdom of God. And so what is God asking you to do and why are you not doing it?
What about, yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. And, and that's absolutely, something I'll pull out of this. What does this say then to the church as a whole? So let's look at it from that perspective. What's this say to us as Christians, either the big C church or even just from a local church? What? What's the metaphor we pull out of this?
Need to weep, fast, pray, and that's what it is God wants to do.
Yeah, um, because it's not that we have Jerusalems that are in ruins. You know, we have people all around us that their lives are ruined. We have, you know, people in our families, people in our communities. You know, people that come here on Thursday nights, people that come to any church on Sunday morning, you know, they've got various levels of their walls crumbles. So kind of that, that human metaphor we take out of this too, i- is, is groups, you know, as the church then. You know, how are we equipped to, um, to help people rebuild their walls? So think about that as we go through this process, because, um, you know, I, this whole study got started several years ago when I was kind of outlining Nehemiah's building process, which I thought was, it's, it's a great leadership metaphor. You know, particularly for, you know, for a project. And, and, you know, as I, as I got deeper and deeper into it, you know, it became more and more apparent that, wow, this is why this story is in, this is why this story is in the Bible, not for, you know, future Christian engineers, but for all of us. Because we're going to, we're going to come across a lot of ruins in our lives and how, how do we, how do we answer to be obedient and patient and prepared to help rebuild those walls?
I think what strikes me somewhat is, you know, he probably knew a long time that Jerusalem was in ruins. I mean, always knew it.
Yeah.
But this one moment really struck him. And he decided, oh, I really need to do something about it. And then whenever he, you know, was praying and felt like God was telling him what to do evidently, the thing that he decided to go do, I mean, even though he was an amazing, obviously amazing leader of doing what he did, what he went to do was drastically beyond his normal thing he was doing. And so what,
That is an excellent.
What huge amount of risk and courage that he got from God somehow to go, I can do this crazy thing.
Yeah.
So it's kind of, you know, encouraging for that, those moments where you think, I can do that.
Exactly. You know, think about it, you know, he's, he's the cut bear. We, we've already talked about his level of responsibility to the king. Just like us, he's busy. You know, he knew in the back of his mind that Jerusalem's jacked up. And God took that moment, you know, he, he got a firsthand account from his brother. And it, you know, it, it finally hit home. But he wasn't impulsive. He wasn't, you know. So. Uh, yeah, I love that, Janice. Good, good.
Yeah, because he had, that had to be way out of his comfort zone. And I mean, you know, and, and I'm sure he thought, you know, there's a lot of other people that are a lot better positioned to do this. Why me? But then I guess he thought, well, I can do it, you know, with God's help, I can do this. And so let's go get it done.
Yeah.
And that's where the need is. So let's go take care of it.
All right. What else? What other insights from these first two chapters?
I have to say, I'm kind of, I'm one of these people that, um, I downplay the weight of emotions, you know, and how that acts upon you. And I guess just seeing how God put him in a very high emotional state, you know, with, when he was revealing to him and was using that. And I think I tend to be thinking, well, I'm not thinking clearly if I'm feeling emotional or whatever. And what it's, you know, prompting you to do or, and, and maybe being more dismissive of that. But that God is working through that. I don't know. But that was for me personally, just because of how I view the influence of emotions on what that was interesting.
And, and then I agree, and emotion is such a fleeting thing though. Remember, he fasted and prayed for four months. And so he was getting the same answer apparently for those four months, no matter what his state of mind was.
Right.
Whether he was emotional or more rational at that point. So listening to things. Like Mark said, it was a branch.
Yeah. But he began, even though he didn't take, yeah. You know, but he was making preparations because he was, you know, prepared to take action. So again, let's, let's think about that context as we go through this. How, how do we, again, how do we apply these lessons?
One, I don't want this to be all about me, and I'm sorry for that. This is the third time I've done it, at least the third time I've done Nehemiah's study. The first time I did it was in, I remember well, was in nineteen ninety-six, a long time ago, to take myself. I was in my thirties and I had just become an executive director for the very first time. A CEO. I'd been a chief operating officer before, but not a CEO. And so I'm in a new community, don't know my way around. My president is, uh, the CEO of State Farm Insurance and had like two thousand employees in that one location. A very devout Christian. And he says, Rob, says, we've got a small men's Bible study group exclusively for CEOs. Now, I'm not saying that Bible study groups need to be exclusive, but this one was. And he said, you're one now. Would you like to be part of this? And of course, he was my president and also a mentor of mine. I said, sure. Well, this was the very first study we did. So the perspective I had is, again, I was around the table with a bunch of people, it was happened to be all men at that time, that were CEOs of much, much larger organizations than mine. And the context that they put it in was, was really eye opening to me. And I'll always remember that. It's, it's the way they, and they were looking at it from their own, their own company and their own people. And when you have two thousand employees, you got drama all the time. You got lawsuits all the time.
Yeah.
And, and so they were dealing with it and they were charried with each other about some of the challenges and frustrations. And I was challenging with them about how I am a kid here. I don't even know what I'm doing yet. And so that was, that was a very, very meaningful study for me. Actually, that was the second time. The first time was I was still in Memphis and, uh, we did a, uh, a small group study with a book called Pass Me Another Brick. Because it made it a book. And I think it's a great study that I recommend to you. So anyway, this one was especially poignant for me, Mark.
Yeah. Um, and like I said, I've been carrying Nehemiah around for quite a while, for several years. So, um.
Right at the end of chapter two, this, this kind of made a point to me. When the people replied, let us start rebuilding, so they began this good work. It goes on to say that, uh, an M and I official and some Arabs heard about it. They mocked and ridiculed them. Asked, what are you doing? Are you rebelling against the king? He answered them by saying, the God of heaven will give us success. Doesn't that sound like when God told Noah to build a boat? And he obeyed and was ridiculed for doing it?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming these people are all non-Juda. Try, or am I super wrong?
No, I, I'm assuming that they are not. Yeah, they are, just Arabs. Patents. Yeah, that's a good point. I like that one. All right. Um, any other thoughts, comments, questions? Ideas? Next week, we're going to dive into chapters three, four, and five, I believe.
That's right.
So we're going to kind of dig into, uh, phase one of the new Jerusalem redevelopment, phase one.
And I will be here, but I look forward to seeing it online, Mark.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. And I mean, we could even stream it if you were.
No, I'm going to be in it. Actually, I'm staying in tail, thankfully, but I'm going to be in a mini meeting in my church.
Gotcha. Um, all right. Um, let me shut this off real quick.